Order, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, uh, need for the approval of the agenda, I don't have any additions or corrections. We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Nope, you got it.
Support.
Take your picture. Uh, any questions or discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, passes. Uh, we'll begin this meeting, uh, as a board meeting, uh, we have one business item today. Um, and then we're gonna conduct the re- remainder of it as a work session, during the work session, no board action will be taken. Uh, moving forward to the regular board meeting, uh, to start with, do we have any comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, we'll... Um, okay, for the bond project, is...
I can, I can speak to that.
Okay.
Um, so, this is, um, it's not a new project, it's a continuation of the traffic loop. It's basically when we had to make a little adjustment when we weren't going to have MDOT's approval to continue up and connect to twelve. Um, so, this is over the fifty thousand dollar threshold though, so it was issued as a bulletin so we could get pricing and make sure it was competitive. Um, which you saw in this will connect that pork chop is what the term they use for, that little triangle, coming down from the intermediate to the middle school drive, so that will become another lane to exit out, which should improve traffic flow even more. And then it also, um, uh, widens the sidewalk at the primary and the intermediate to make sure our students are safe. So once the sidewalk was put in, uh, both Mr. Jordan and Mrs. Spalding realized that wasn't quite enough to keep our kids back off of the road with having the cars come up, so this basically doubles the side of our sidewalk back by the school for safety. Um, all of it does come in, um, so we still had in contingency and allowances from that project of the traffic loop. We had over three hundred and ten thousand, really three hundred eighteen thousand that was left over from that that wasn't used with any of the other parts of the project. This bulletin, um, which will include that, uh, connection and the sidewalk and, um, all that goes with that will come in at two hundred forty-six thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars and one cent. So it still is under budget essentially for that project with the addition of that. We did price out both asphalt and concrete, and actually concrete came in cheaper than the asphalt. The other thing that allows is because, um, asphalt, uh, manufacturers are shutting down right now, heading into fall. Uh, they do think they will be able with the concrete to get it done this fall. So we won't have to wait for spring that we would've had to with asphalt. So, we're just looking for approval on that so that they can move forward and then we can complete the loop part of our bond, our bond work.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Is the upkeep for the asphalt and the concrete comparable like long-term?
Actually, concrete would be considered the better product to use, it tends to be more expensive, but I think when you paired it with the sidewalks as well too being one job, then it ended up being cheaper.
So, the tie-in...
It was a little, about eight thousand dollars cheaper, so...
So the tie-in to twelve is dead?
At this moment, yes. We've had no approval, um, when we looked at even switching it up and looking at the church, the traffic consultant basically said that wasn't a very safe option at this time, and I don't wanna go, and I don't think you guys either with something that isn't gonna be viewed as safe. So, at this moment, it is for this, this particular project, that doesn't mean, I mean, it's still in our bond scope. If we decided that was something we wanted to look into as we're heading into that, yeah, second series, it is something we could continue to, to look at.
Okay.
Um, the one thing I'll say is both, um, with the intermediate and the primary, we do now, when parents are, you know, following all of the rule, kind of rules and procedures we've put out there, we can get all cars on campus during that time and off of section street even with that. Um, and intermediates pickup time has dropped substantially and the primary is, you couldn't, even if we had more road, you couldn't move any faster with those little ones to get them in their seats, and we're back to, um, actually under the time of really where we were at the end of last year for that loop as well too.
And, all the cars are staying off section, that's really impressive.
Well, if they follow the proceeds, some don't wanna go down to that last, uh, high school entrance, which is really, you're supposed to be using both the middle entrance and the last entrance. When you do that, all cars can come off of section, especially with the time difference between Eagle Lake and then coming over here. Sometimes some don't wanna go down to that last one and they'll be out on section street when they back up in the middle one, 'cause they think that way is quicker.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question. Didn't, and this isn't school property, but I'm just curious. Have we looked at potentially, so a lot of the kids are coming out off section, going around Max and around, right? And then they're cutting through the fire department and they're racing and doing a lot of stuff, and there's been a couple of accidents I noticed. Has, I mean, has anybody, like, I guess, and I know you go to the so- some of the township stuff and everything, have they talked about a potential light there by any chance, because it's super dangerous, I mean, I've seen that one every day.
Nothing, nothing right now, and, and really it's interesting with MDOT on where they will and will not allow lights, 'cause that's even when we were looking at that connection to twelve, they were want, they were saying that we would need to move the light at section to go out there, and then that would leave section without a light again. And then they changed their mind on that and said, nope, you just can't have a light. So there's got Conrad is another one that could use some sort of light or something, in my opinion, I am not a traffic person, but, um, it takes a lot of what I found from MDOT, but then, that's a concern we can bring up with, especially, you know, uh, onto a township police department as well too.
I just see them, like, racing and, and everything, but I, as, the way that I understand it, just talking to my neighbor who's, you know, the, um, is Cass County,
Mhm.
And MDOT, May Street would be considered Cass County, right? Um, sixty-two would be considered MDOT, so you have this conflict of who's actually responsible for that particular intersection, but I've just noticed a lot and the kids are back up there and I just worry about the safety.
And some of it's just the cost too, that, um, you know, not, this, it wouldn't be the school's cost, but for looking at traffic studies and all that that they require even when considering a light. But really, it's, I think, the community reaching out to those different entities like MDOT that puts the pressure on them. I think that's how really the light at section, you know, besides, you know, gym pushing as well too and the school pushing, it was really the community saying that that's what they needed there, and, and they had, um, what they've said, they had so many complaints calling up to MDOT, which was one of the reasons that I think they moved forward with that light, and their rationale for not looking at another one now is they said they don't get any complaints anymore, so things must be moving pretty smoothly.
Yeah, okay, makes sense, I just wonder if anybody had discussed it with any of the...
Not that I've heard of.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it hasn't been discussed.
Any other questions? Okay, um, so, can I have a motion to approve the change order as presented?
So moved, support.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Not hearing any, uh, everybody in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Alright, motion passes. Alright, let's move on to the work portion session, or work session portion. Um, for a discussion regarding district data, and Ryan Towner, I believe you are gonna start us out?
And if anybody, I mean, we can stay here at the table, we're also welcome to go to the tables if whatever you guys are more comfortable in, these chairs might be more comfortable. Just want you to know that there is that option as well, to be going to work the work session. Jared, do you need us to hit that, or do you... Okay.
Do you need these out here? Do you want these out here too, Ryan?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I, I aired on the side of two minutes. Thank you, Dr. Suits and trustees for the opportunity to share. Um, we have so much to highlight and celebrate about the great work being done by our teachers and, and students, really everyone involved with our school system. Um, so I'm excited to be able to kick things off for you. Um, you know, this is largely, we're looking at our proficiency data with state assessments. Um, you know, our goals are to really highlight for you the great things happening in our schools, and also take the opportunity to share particular focus areas with each school. Um, and like I said, showcasing just outstanding work that's being done, uh, by our Edwardsburg faculty and families. Um, so our format will be similar to what it's been, as I understand it, in years past, uh, where principals ha- will have the opportunity to come up and, and kinda speak particularly to their data, they're the ones who are certainly, you know, very in that work every day, and they'll be able to speak real directly to the things happening in our buildings. Um, one thing I wanted to note, uh, you know, there, there's kind of like, well, two, two types of assessment, if you will. Uh, so formative assessments are ongoing in our classrooms, oh, like, every day, right? Now, you've heard your children talk about big ones like I-Ready or DIBELS or ECE, CBM, or you know when they have like a unit assessment? And that's very actionable data that's used when our, our teams of teachers meet and, and things like two-hour late starts and so on. Um, the purpose today is to really particularly highlight some of our state summative assessment data. So we'll be talking about M-Step, PSAT, SAT, and then AP, which AP is an especially awesome highlight. Um, so, I, I'll, I mean, we're gon- we're diving right in, guys, so, uh, Mrs. Spalding, if you would, um, now, one thing I'll note, I, I just kinda kicked off talking about M-Step, so, at the primary building, well, there is no, like, state test. Thank goodness, right?
I'm the bonus building.
Yeah, they, fortunately, we don't have to have, uh, kids log in and go through everything with M-Step. Um, but we use a tool called DIBELS, Mrs. Spalding will share with you a bit about that. Um, and some of that assessment data also goes into assessment that's done at Eagle Lake. Um, formally with our K-two students, but then three, four, five as well with students who we're really keeping a sharp eye on, uh, especially with skills that are developing. Um, so anyhow, uh, take it away, Ms. Spalding.
So, the one assessment I'm really gonna talk about with you is DIBELS. And DIBELS is an acronym for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. And we're talking about the five pillars of literacy, and the five pillars of literacy comes from a study done twenty-five years ago. Comes from the National Reading Panel, if you really want riveting reading, you can go to the NRP study. It was done in two thousand, it was published in two thousand. It was the carried around with me, it went from bookshelf to bookshelf with me, it's about a two and a half inch thick book. Um, but it outlined all of the great things that we should be doing as reading instructors. And so, in that study, they found the five pillars of literacy. And the five pillars are phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. And if our kids are getting all of these pillars, that's laying the foundation for them to be, um, good readers. And so phonemic awareness, I always say that's like the, um, the megaphone or the, um, your sound system. So you're listening for, um, the ability to hear, identify, and manipulate individual sounds or phonemes and spoken words. So in a K-one building, that's where we start out with our kids, you might hear us talk about Hegarty. And so that's teaching our kids, or Kilpatrick, it's teaching kids to identify those basic sounds. Then we move on to that phonics pillar, and with the phonics pillar, it's taking those sounds now and, um, building the understanding of how those sounds, which are called phonemes, and letters, which are called graphemes, are connected together, and how you use those two connections to real words. And that sounds funny, using the words phonemes and graphemes. But if you go into a K-one classroom, they're using that terminology with those kids, and the kids can tell you what a phoneme is and what a grapheme is. And it's just mind-blowing, because when we grew up, we didn't know what a phoneme was. And then, um, from there, you move on to fluency. And fluency is the ability to be able to read text accurately. And beginning readers, when they first start reading, they kinda sound like robots, and we, hello, you don't wanna sound like a robot. You wanna sound like you're talking, wanna read with, um, yes, you wanna read with character in your voice, you know, you wanna sound like you're talking to your friend when you're reading. So we're working on them reading at a natural pace with appropriate expression. Then we move on to vocabulary, and you know at Eagle Lake, they've been doing a lot of work with vocabulary. Um, often we find students not coming with a wide variety of vocabulary. And so building that vocabulary, so they have a wide variety of vocabulary to draw from. So we're not just getting writing samples that say, "I like to play." What else do you like to do? "I like to run." They can use other words other than like. And so building upon their vocabulary, and making sure they understand the meanings of those words. And then the final pillar is comprehension, which is the under, the meaning, the ability to understand what we're reading. So in early elementary, we're teaching them how to read and learning to read, and as they go through the lan- learning progression, they're ki- going from learning to read to reading to learn. And so, that is what the five pillars are. And with DIBELS, you're doing different assessments, testing these five, um, pillars. So at the elementary level, or at my building, we're testing for phonemic awareness, phonics. And then we do start testing at the second half of first grade for fluency and some early comprehension. So I think I can go to the next screen. So this shows some of our DIBELS data. Um, the blue is the dimi- DIBELS phoneme segmentation. And so for phoneme segmentation, they're given a nonsense word. Nonsense words might be, oh, I'm trying to think of a nonsense word off the top of my head, zag. And so they might say zag. And so they're sounding out the sounds that they see, or they might actually say it all together, they might just look at that and say zag, I can read it. And so we're looking for the sounds that they can say in the word, or blending it all together. And so, the national norm is the blue, and the orange is us. So this is kindergarten, beginning of the year, last year, middle of the year, oops, I'm sorry, the middle of the year, end of the year. So we're performing well above where the national norm is. Then here was first grade, beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. So our teachers are working really hard, and you wouldn't think that this is such a big skill, but it really is a big skill that they have this basic knowledge to be able to do this. And then we have correct letter sounds, I'm sorry, yeah, but nonsense word, I'm sorry. Phoneme segmentation is if we give them a word, wrong, wrong test. Phoneme segmentation is if I given them word cat, they're able to look at me and say, "cat." They're able to break the word apart into the sounds. Nonsense word fluency is they're able to give us the sounds. And so, beginning of the year, kindergartners have no clue as to what we're asking them to do, they're like, what? What is this test? But as the year goes along, we went from having three here at the beginning of the year up to twenty-four, and then the year at forty-one, so we made some significant growth from three to forty-one. First grade, just above the average. Here, seventy-four, so significantly above the national average again.
Tracy, if I can add a little context? Um, so DIBELS was produced by the University of Oregon way back, like, public domain meetings. Um, the University of Oregon has a lo- a lot of educational products began there, that was like an early research institution. Um, and so the DIBELS benchmarks, uh, millions of students are assessed with DIBELS, tens of millions. Um, and so these benchmarks are, they've, well, they've now updated eight different times, they were published. Um, and just, you know, um, Tracy will continue to share with more graph, but I just wanna highlight, um, what's really cool is you look at where our, our kindergartners have begun, which really on all the charts are showing, uh, I, well, the Orifon were a little higher. Uh, but when you look at kindergarten, we are below what are the national norms. Um, and then you look at where we end up by the end of first grade, and it's incredible. So it's just a, a, a really big highlight to the teachers, and just to give you an idea, it's really hard to get data like that. Um, I, you know, I've been, been in schools for a while, as you know, uh, you know, my former place, I, I very much was using DIBELS, and we were real in tune to the data, uh, we never saw that much of a separation over the national norm. So kudos to you and your staff, Tracy, it's awesome. Um, also, phoneme segmentation is a huge deal, that is the area, the domain of the big five. People always think that, that dyslexia is about phonics and seeing letters in reverse. Um, that, that can be a subsection of dyslexia. Uh, research supports that the biggest domain impacted by dyslexia is phoneme segmentation. Uh, and that can be overcome with great teaching and really strong reading intervention. And so, just that phoneme segmentation chart, uh, says that we have a lot of really great things going, and we're servicing our students very well. Sorry, Tracy.
No, you're fine. Um, and I would say, you know, it is really disheartening at the beginning of the year when you look at these, and I always have to remind myself, my kindergartners are supposed to come in with zeros on their scores. It's our job to give them that foundation, and I should expect them to score low on the beginning tests. And I always take it to heart, and like, in the spring when I was meeting with Fury and Courtney going over my evaluation data, I was still hard on our scores, and they were really good, they really were, I didn't have any kids who were at risk, and the scores looked fantastic, and still, I want my kids, they'll all be proficient, I want a hundred percent proficiency, and I wasn't at a hundred perfect, set proficiency, so I was really hard on us. So I, I had to learn to give everyone grace, because they deserve it, because they've made phenomenal growth. And so, um, and this is oral reading fluency, and this is a hard test for us to take. So our students, um, do start it on the beginning of the year, but the beginning of the year oral reading fluency is testing them on a passage that is an end-of-the-year goal. So they're looking at a reading passage that they shouldn't be proficient with until the end of the school year. So it is a really hard passage for them to read. So the national norm is a ten, and our students averaging are, are averaging around an eighteen. And so, they're performing very well with this passage. And by the end of the year, our first graders were at a sixty-two. So our teachers are working really hard to get our students where they're at. Um, it's kudos to the classroom teachers, it's kudos to Mrs. Stock and her intervention team. Um, I'm happy to say that with our thirty-five J-M-X-Y-Z grant, I'm not sure which letter it is of the thirty-five grants, um, we were able to hire our extra reunion interventionist this year, so we'll be able to target our bubble kids again this year. Um, we were without that position last year. So we're really looking forward to seeing continued growth in our reading for this upcoming year. And, um, you know, I have that goal of having eighty percent of my readers proficient, and you know, maybe it'll be eighty-five percent, maybe it'll be ninety percent this year, so we're really looking forward to seeing, um, our students reach those stretch goals this year and continuing. Thank you. So, um, the other thing that we're embracing this year is developmentally appropriate pedagogy. Um, this is my step up on my doctoral, um, I'm working on my doctoral right now. And it's on, um, pedagogical leadership, and as leaders, doing what's pedagogically right for our students. And although state legislators don't always do what's pedagogically right with their reforms and their legislation that is passed, making sure that they're somehow aligning or finding that gap and figuring out how do we fix that. I don't know that my research will help. But at the K-one building, we are working on going back to some things that are more pedagogically appropriate. And so we are bringing back at least thirty minutes of free playtime in the elementary, because that is developmentally appropriate for our kids, and making sure that they're getting that opportunity to play, and that teachers can actually assess some of the things that we're teaching during that free playtime as well. And that we're gonna work on improving our outcomes as well, and doing some of that through our developmentally appropriate time as well. Thank you.
Tracy, you have a que- oh, go ahead, Tony.
Oh, no worries.
No, I just, I had a question. I know, obviously, we started this, this early fives, this early K program. Um, and twenty-four, twenty-five would be obviously about the time that we started that. Is there a way to measure, I'm just curious, the kids that go through that program and how they do that kindergarten, that first year with us, because you guys are already speaking the language, right?
I could actually tell you, all of those students, um, that went through Young Fives last year, during kindergarten this year, are already at or above benchmark on all of the kindergarten assessments this fall.
Awesome.
They're rock stars in those kindergarten assessments.
Cool, great, thank you.
Yep, I can tell you that one right away. Oh, there's one, there's one there, yep, they're rock stars right now.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be interesting for parents to understand that, that, yeah.
Mrs. and Charlie are solid foundation, and we have thirty more in Young Fives this year, so another solid group of foundational skills going on, so.
Awesome.
Be great.
Great.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that what you were going to ask too?
No.
Oh, I thought...
I was just thanking her.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm having a Young Five student, I did a test, that George comes home and talks about gee, game, god, ee, eddy, eh, and all these things that he's learning, so I'm excited to know that he's exactly where he's to be in a great family. Um, so, before I kinda talk M-Step, I'm gonna go back here and really talk a little... Um, so before I kind of talk M-step, I'm going to go back here and really talk a little bit about some of this Dibbles data as well. And just again hone in on and focus how amazing it is the way that our kids, we look at oral reading fluency. At Eagle Lake, we really focus on that fluency, the vocabulary, to them leading to that comprehension. And it's amazing to see when you look at our second graders beginning of the year, they're almost even with that national norm benchmark at the start of the year. Then through the work of our classroom teachers, Patricia Lawson and our title team. You can just see how that gap so drastically widens between our students and students nationally. And that is something that just can't be understood and that's really a testament to our fantastic teaching team and staff and all the work they're doing. Um, and similar thing that you can see in third grade, when you look at that beginning of the year. Again, because they've been with us longer now, that national, that variance between the national norm is starting to widen a little bit more. But still, as you look, you know, we were only thirteen above the national percentile. End of the year in third grade, we're eighteen above, so growing. And what's neat with that is we were able to see this year and celebrate some of that focus on fluency. And we talked last year about that vocabulary and some of that initiative that we did. That what that really did then is it translated, right? It went from those Dibbles assessments and that to then translating to M-step. So you can see when you look at Eagle Lake's third grade ELA, um, we had fifty-three point four percent to pass, which was highest of anybody in our area in third grade. And when we think about M-step, that's really assessing students on those third grade standards and the comprehension piece, right? And so it's taking all of those components that Tracy does a fantastic job giving the phonics and our team works on the phonics, the fluency and vocabulary to get them to be where they can comprehend grade level text. Um, and so I love seeing that we have a wide, wide range there then from fifteen percent higher than the state. So it's, um, really beautiful to see that all those small components and combining together to see that take place on M-step. Uh, when we look at math, um, we had fifty and a half percent of our students be proficient, which was eight percent higher than the variance. And so that's one of those areas this year. Um, while we're still well above the state and top three in the area, we really want to push to be the highest in the area, right? We want to be number one with that. And so with that, um, one of our focus areas in math is doing similarly to what we did last year with ELA of creating some goals around that. So really nailing down some of that, um, those essential skills with math, focus, focusing on the fact fluency. Um, we are launching, it's a program called Focus Math. It's an intervention program that is really intentional on providing those kids those foundational math skills when we think about number sense and computation. Because what we want to see is follow that same model we did with ELA of focusing on those individual pieces to then translate to the overall. Am I done? Is that what that means? Um, but and to see a translate, and again, that's not to take away, obviously still doing some fantastic things in math, but we want to see that gap widening even more. And so that's one of the areas we're focusing on math. Another piece in ELA, we are continuing to focus on those essential five. But we want to really launch our students to even be able to think critically and deeper. And one of the ways that we can do that is by utilizing, um, writing within their reading. Because we know there's a strong connection and correlation that the better the kids can write, the better they can read. And so, um, within our late starts, one of the first ones we actually did, we worked through a book study. Um, we'd write the book over the summer and then we did some different things with it in first late start book called The Writing Revolution. And we were able to tie that into, we already use the beautiful program of Hegarty, but being able to expand into the offering they have of Bridge to Writing and something that was already available to us that we could just take advantage of. And what was fantastic about that Science of Writing PD is everything we said was, oh, my gosh, what we're using now does this. What we're using does this. And so we're seeing amazing things already. Um, and then one of the things that I'm really excited about, last year I talked a lot about within iReady, really focusing on growth. We talk a lot about at Eagle Lake, about progress, not perfection. That, you know, our mission statement as a school district is maximizing all students' potential to be successful. One of the ways they can do that is with growth. So I was challenged last year, do you have a goal on that growth? And so what we did as a school improvement team is we sat down and we set goals on what we wanted our typical growth to look like and we wanted our stretch growth to look like. When I talk about typical growth, that is referencing in iReady, if a student makes an entire year's worth of growth, that would be typical growth. And so now keep in mind, when we talk about typical growth, that is saying if a kid came in start of third grade, already benchmarked at third grade level, that they then finished the year at the start of fourth grade. That can be challenging to get some of those students who are already higher level thinkers in that age level to move that far. So while I love to say, oh, a hundred percent of students are going to be, meet their typical growth, that's why that percentage is not a hundred percent. Does that make sense? And so that's why we set our, our goal last year was to have eighty percent, the first time we set the goal, and we finished the year in ELA with eighty percent of kids meeting their typical growth. Um, the one that I was really excited about was our stretch growth. And we talk about stretch, that's students who are actually making almost two years' worth of academic gains in one year. So if we think about students who come in well below grade level, for example, in third grade, if they tested the start of the year at a first grade level, that would mean by the end of the year, they've caught up by two years, which is really remarkable and really challenging to do. So we had set that goal. The reason I had set it at fifty percent is because last year iReady recognized schools as what was called super stretch schools. Basically, a high distinction that they had a really high number of students make that stretch growth. So I set the goal at fifty percent and we actually had fifty-one percent of students achieve, uh, stretch growth. But what I didn't appreciate was that iReady actually moved the goalpost on me and they set it at fifty-five. So there, and when I am referencing a high level distinction, when I looked at iReady's website, it's about thirty schools nationally that are recognized with that, and that's a large, out of a large amount of schools. So when I'm saying that this is a big deal amount of kids with stretch growth, it's in a very high upper echelon. So now I actually meeting with my school improvement team tomorrow, that goal is now going to become fifty-five percent. And hopefully they don't move the goalpost on me again. But still something to celebrate. Um, so those are some of the main highlights for me. What questions do you have about the awesome things at Eagle Lake?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, um.
It's Andy's birthday today.
Oh, happy birthday.
Planned it on tonight, just wanted to make sure.
He wanted to spend his time with all of us.
So I kind of see similar trends with the intermediate. Again, it's all, you know, it starts at the primary and it builds and, and continues to have that growth going through. So, um, this is our M-step data from last year for just our fourth graders. So ELA, um, we're at that fifty-four point five, uh, which is, you know, we're more than ten percent over that, that state goal. So we did stretch that gap a little bit. Um, obviously our ultimate goal is always to be the top, so we're, we're going to continue to work on growth there. Same with math, um, we're a little bit higher in the math, um, with the area schools there, but we're still not number one. Um, but we've continued to, to widen that gap between our, the state scores and ours. Um, and I will say for all these, we want to get back to pre-COVID. We were like in those high sixties, sometimes seventy percent. That's where we want to get. But everybody's dropped. Again, the state goals dropped all pretty much at, at the same. So that's what we're working towards, is try to get back to where we were pre-COVID in all of these, these state tests. Um, fifth grade then for math in ELA, um, we've, we've kind of finally started to beat our area schools. So we're pretty happy and excited about that. Um, and continue to again widen those gaps between the state score and our state score, our, our score and the state score. Math, you can see, um, we were twenty, almost twenty percent higher than the state, state score there. So, um, again, we want to keep striving. The teachers, we tell them that we'd like them to have eighty percent of their kids at seventy percent proficient. So, um, when we hit that, then obviously that means we'll be at seventy percent proficient. So that's what we're, we're aiming for. Um, and then fifth grade has the lovely experience of starting to take all the M-steps. So they also take social studies and science. Um, and this test, I mean, if you look, I don't even think we, yeah, the state's twenty-nine, so, um, pretty low for a state average. But we've continued to kind of widen that gap with the state through the years as well. We are in the middle of a social studies adoption. Uh, it's been a long, geez, probably as long as the math one had been, I would say at least ten years since we've done a social studies adoption. So I think that that's going to help us with those, uh, social study scores. And the thing is, is this is the first time they take it. So the social studies that they start learning and out in kindergarten, all the way through to us is on that test. So it's not like it's just the stuff that they learned the year before. It's all social studies that they've had to that point in their educational career, shows up on that test. So it's got a whole lot of stuff that they're going to have to remember. So I don't, I, I don't know how, I, I don't think the state knows exactly where that's going to land because it is such a broad test. Um, science, same idea. It's the first time they get tested at the state level for science. So it kind of encompasses all the science that they've had up until that time. Um, my building has a lot of teachers that are really into the science. They spend a good amount of time. We, we average probably four days a week, um, at forty to fifty minutes a day on science, which is higher than, than we're required to from the state. Um, and so usually do pretty well against the state scores on that and against the area schools too, because the staff really. And we just adopted the new science curriculum last year. So I'll talk about that a little bit, um, on our, on what we kind of did with that this year on, on my one slide. So, um, again, we always are always looking to, to get better. So success time, we had started this last year and we've, we kind of decided it was, they're going in the right direction, but not enough. So our success time for math last year was just one semester and then we switched to ELA. And we found that the ELA is a little bit harder to do in that targeted intervention like that in the short time span. Cause we're talking like every two weeks, we would take a short assessment. And that's really not enough time for them to, to teach that in, in the LA class. So the math is going to be the full year of success time. So again, it allows us to assess them on one standard. And then they get two to three weeks of targeted intervention. The, the lower groups will have no more than fifteen kids in their group. Um, and then we kind of grow and we do some advanced stuff with the kids that have already mastered it. So if they're getting five out of five, then those will be in some groups that will get to do some advanced math stuff related to that topic. And so that meets twice a week, um, and we'll do that all the way up until spring break and then M-step starts. Um, and so this here, success time will shut down. For language arts, we decided to again allow them to have more time in the class to do that. So we have a monthly focus area. So each one of the months is going to focus on a comprehension piece. Cause again, those five pillars, we're at that comprehension, right? So that's real big for our building. We do have some students that are still working on the other pillars and we've got title, um, and some different things in place for those students. And then also tier two stuff going on in the classroom, um, which I'll kind of talk about with that one too. But, so each month they're going to focus on one of the comprehension pieces. Cause we, as a school improvement team, looked at the data, we drilled M-step down as far as they'd let, you're allowed to drill it down. You can't necessarily get to the student. And then iReady, you can drill down and we found the different pieces of comprehension that are giving us trouble. And so we've picked one of those for each month. Um, and so when our building sets our goals, you kind of don't want to just say get better at math, get better at the LA. So we had some specific ones. So in math, we said, we'll improve our understanding and interpretation of fractions and decimals. So all of our math pieces that we do in the intermediate kind of are parts of that. And so we pick those specifically that we're going to work on. Um, all students will show improvement in reading for information across curriculum. So if you're reading for information, that means you're comprehending, which is, is, was the piece that we're looking at. And it's one of the lower pieces in the M-step and the iReady is comprehension. So that's our, going to be our monthly focus areas. And all students will demonstrate improved writing skills across the curriculum. So Orton-Gillingham's kind of been going on in the district for a couple of years. It went in phases. So the lower elementaries all got trained. Our title teachers got trained, our special ed teachers got trained, and then our building, uh, was trained this summer and during August and that first week of PD for the school. And so it, it was originally designed for dyslexic students. But obviously what's good for a student that has some type of disability is good for all students. So it, it is definitely helpful for all of our students to improve. So our teachers now have been trained in that. They can use that as tier two stuff in their classrooms. Our title teachers could then you do it for some tier three with some of the students that are still in that lower end. And it helps improve vocabulary. It helps improve writing, all pieces that feed into that comprehension piece that we've been talking through with all of those five pillars. So we've got that going on and that, uh, was completed, I think I've only got, I think I had one staff member that had conflict this summer and wasn't able to do the training. The other ones had either received it from one of the other buildings. Um, so just about a hundred percent of the staff went through that training as well as myself and, um, Mr. Malander and, and Mr. Towner were there as well. So, um, it was pretty eye-opening training. It was stuff that I had never learned. Definitely not how I was taught how to read growing up. Um, explains a lot, like why I'm a slow reader, why I'm a bad speller. I mean, I, I was like, why do you know that? The alphabet's a code? I had no idea. I'm like, so once they told me that, I'm like, well, that's let easier. I think I'm a better speller already. So. It is, it's pretty fascinating stuff and it blows me away that it's been around as long as it has and not taught at universities for teachers, um, as part of the training. So that was pretty interesting. Um, another piece that we're using when we do these monthly focus areas is iReady has, uh, standards-based mastery. So you can pick a single standard. It gives the students like five questions that are M-step based questions. They're set up like M-step, so it actually gives them a little test prep too on how to, because M-step is not just multiple choice. Like an A, B, C, D for the elementary world. It's, they got to manipulate boxes around and different things. And some of our kids just struggled on taking that test because they're just used to what we normally do in a classroom. So that's kind of a little side bonus is that it, it does do a little bit of M-step test prep for them. But it gives them five questions on one standard. So we do it the first week of the month. And then we'll take it again at the end of the month to measure that growth. And so we just started, we took our first one in October, so we haven't got, um, through the month yet. But we'll see, see, we'll be able to measure our growth on that as we go through the months. And so we've got one of those standards again for each of our months. And we're going to take that all the way up again through spring break through March and then we start the testing for M-step after that. Um, and then for the science, so last year was our first year with that. So the science committee has gone ahead now and made a pacing guide. We've added in pre and post-test, uh, for those science curriculum as well, so we can continue to measure our growth in science. Um, and make sure that the, the curriculum that we have is being implemented correctly and is, is helping us grow there. Those are our pieces in our, questions?
I just had a quick question. It seems like in the past we got like our, the schools in our conference, but we also got comparable schools? Is that right?
Some of those built in.
Okay.
Um, so.
Like, I think it was.
If there are some specific assessments where you wanted to see for comparable schools, I can also.
I just thought it was useful. I think it was based on school size and then maybe free and reduced lunch. Is that how that goes? Like, how they chose our comparables?
It depends. So there's sometimes comparables that are based, yeah, on size, free and reduced lunch. Other times we would pull ones that aren't comparable and actually have far more resources than we do to then compare and show where we were aiming for. So, um, some of the schools that aren't in our, because our, um, conference, our athletic conference are schools that are similar in size to us. So we would choose some that were either bigger with more funding and then compare as well to, to show kind of where we were aiming for.
I just thought we had gotten.
I have some longitudinal multi-grade bubble graphs that we'll get to.
Perfect.
That both are along the lines of.
Um, okay, well, I'm, uh, going to step in and present on behalf of the middle school. Um, and so, uh, you know, here we're showing sixth grade. Uh, sixth grade's tough. You know, I'm, I'm proud of our sixth grade teachers that, um, kind of within our, our conference schools, if you will. Our students are highest in both domains of ELA and math. Um, sixth grade is a focus group, um, ever I've ever worked, sixth grade's a focus group. I, I think it's just something about that transition from elementary to middle school. Uh, when you look at state averages, typically you see a big drop in sixth grade and then things really rebound. Um, and so our, our students, uh, you know, they really, uh, are the highest achieving sixth graders in our area. Um, that is a group though that we're, we're very mindful and focused on, uh, continuing, uh, to move forward. Um, okay, this is where it starts to get exciting. So our, our, uh, our seventh grader, so our current eighth graders, um, it's just, uh, it's crazy. I think the words off the chain would be like what we used to describe. Um, so they in ELA were twenty-five percent higher than the state average. Uh, so just such a, uh, an awesome thing. And then in math, nineteen percent higher. Um, it certainly speaks to amazing work taking place, uh, in those classrooms and, and the work that our students are doing. Okay, uh, this is getting to social studies and science. So social studies, um, and the state actually put out information basically saying like, this year in grades, uh, eight and then eleven, they almost like recalibrated social studies. You start to see that state average get a bit higher. Hey, there you see scores in the seventies, right? Which we're real excited by. Um, and so for that, again, so for, for social studies in eighth grade, so remember eighth grade is where we get into PSAT and we, we start the PSAT trajectory. Um, but they still take then M-step, social studies and science. Uh, and so that's the social studies scores, they're twenty-five point three. Uh and so that's the social studies scores, they're twenty-five point three percent above the state averages. Um which though, that's a state, that's a variance, uh that's just outstanding, that's incredible. Um I've ne- I've never seen before a twenty-five point three percent variance over the state, it's awesome. Um so and then in uh in science, again, we're leading the pack uh at fifty-four point four percent passing. Okay, this is uh PSAT data and this is where Dr. Friends you'll see this, um. It's more like Southwest schools, schools we traditionally uh comp with. Um and so we have our our ELA and then math, so if you can imagine for Edwardsburg, it's the. It is the the same score, right, it's saying how how our eighth graders did in ELA and then math compared to kind of more like our conference schools. And then how we did in ELA and math on PSAT eight compared to kind of, now I use the word similar, I got some feedback that. That framing it more as Southwest schools might be the better comparison, but like Dr. Suits shared, um kind of our methodology with how these were chosen. Um you see that in our conference, we're doing great in the eighties percent on ELA. Um you know, math, we're still, gosh, that's still like twenty-three percent higher than the state, right, that's something to keep in mind. Math on PSAT is somewhat i- it's tough because you have students who are on different trajectories and they're tested over many domains of math. So if you're a student who depending on when you took algebra or if you've taken algebra one yet, that's going to impact on how how you do on PSAT for math. Um and then you see here very competitive within kind of the the comparable schools who we track uh in in the Southwest region.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
When it says fifty-three point four, that's fifty-three point four what?
Uh that's fifty-three point four determined to be at proficiency.
At proficiency.
And gosh, I'm sorry, I forget the cut score, um but within our um we use a. An application called My School Data, so administrators and all all the state schools have access to this. We're able to see our data and then we can also search other the schools of other ISDs. Throughout the state.
So that's not above state average or something like that, there's a certain number that is all proficient?
Yeah, these would be kind of straight proficiency percentages. Uh based on what the state provides, there's kind of four proficiency categories for M step as well. So there's kind of like a well below, approaching, uh proficient and then above proficiency.
Okay.
So that would be the combination of proficient and above proficient. So there's some things I that our our middle school is focused on. Um you know, first off, highlights increased proficiency across PSAT, social studies is a big celebration. The seventh grade data is awesome, it's a great highlight. Um I'll add with science, you know, that's a celebration because that was a new team of teachers essentially. Um people who are earlier in their careers and new to their their courses. Uh so that's something that Mr. Born was was, you know, he is proud, we're proud of those teachers. Um you know, supporting seventh grade, that that cohort of students, we want to give a lot to support to. Uh just based on their, you know, in sixth grade data, there was somewhat of a dip, so that's where uh there's some concrete planning taking place with how to support those students. Um to speak to some of that, the middle school this year is doing uh success classes, which are essentially based on need in reading or math. A student has a paired second course of reading or math, that's kind of the tier two support, if you will, so. When we talk, when you hear educators talk about tier two, like tier one is the general classroom, uh grade level based instruction that all students get. Tier two would be that like targeted reteaching, that skill based reteaching, still with the, you know, the. The grade level standard in mind, and so for these students, they're basically getting kind of a double dose of reading, a double dose of math. Uh so it's a very structured format between those two courses. Um you know, one of one of the biggest indicators for student growth is the amount of time students spend in direct instruction. And so that's a lot of direct instruction in reading and in math and ultimately, you know, we believe will lead to good outcomes.
Ryan, is that the achieve to succeed class?
So achieve to succeed, essentially, yes.
It was really confusing like in choosing that, like I didn't understand really kind of when I was trying to choose for my own son, you know, what what that class. Really kind of stood for or what what they actually learned in that.
So and that course has been specifically sixth grade and then now that success course they've added in seventh and eighth.
Yeah.
Uh so you really have like that second reading and math opportunity.
Got you.
To support students who need it the whole way through six, seven, eight.
Okay.
Um and then uh there i- as well, another thing is a a big focus on curriculum, you've seen that now from a couple of buildings that with. Uh the Amplify Science adoption of last year, uh that there is that focus on really the curricular alignment. And making sure teachers feel comfort comfortable dialed in, uh it's what it takes with the new curriculum, um you know, it's. It can be a couple of years to feel really proficient with it, and so that's where I'm I'm happy that our school teams are taking the opportunity to do so for their teachers. Are there any questions I can answer based on the middle school data? All right, well, I'm going to carry forward a little bit before Mr. Dandron comes up, um so Dr. Friends, this would be. Uh this is English Language Arts and this is looking at M step data, so grades three through seven. And so this is looking longitudinally how our students, you know, did. Um so these would be all of the Southwest Conference comparisons, right? Um I like it in this format in that we can see like how students come in, you know, and we're kind of mid-pack, if you will. And then where we end up compared to our other kind of Southwest Conference peers. So this would be for strictly for language arts and kind of a profile of how we did multi-grade level across. And then I also did that for math. So again, you can see, and it it's just interesting when you see trends of the state, you know, I I guess I don't have any rationale for why that is the case. What I noticed though is while other schools are largely dropping, we're hanging in there and again, we finish very strongly compared to our peers. In consideration of where we generally come in at. Are there any questions I could answer? That information and and as well, um I'd be happy to to provide for you the graphs or, you know, the tables, I have that in the table format as well. Uh if you'd like that. All right. Mr. Dandron.
Thank you, Ryan.
You got it, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so. Mike Dandron, I know that Mr. Markle couldn't be here tonight, so he asked me to present on behalf of the high school, so we have a lot of exciting data that we want to share out. Um it's a celebration, if you will, and you're going to see these building blocks starting with Mrs. Spalding at the uh primary building all the way up. You heard about the the great things that they're doing as well as the separation that you've seen that has occurred over each building. Um but what I wanted to highlight furthermore is it starts in both directions, it starts with the school board at the top and thank you guys for everything that you guys have done. The leadership that Dr. Suits has presented onto the building administrators, to the teachers, we have a great system and you can see that from top down onward. Um and and again, as I said, from bottom up as well. Uh I wrote down some stats and we're going to s- look at some numbers, so what you see here is this the SAT scores. Um so what this is, is the SAT for Edwardsburg this year, we finished with a ten sixty-three point two. So I put together a five-year trend and that's what you guys see in front of you there, that is in a larger size, it's on the laminated piece of paper. This year for the the senior class, the last year's juniors, that was the first online test they offered for the SAT. So the game changed a little bit last year with the online assessment, the prior year to that, you've seen the ten forty-six. Which is the class of uh twenty twenty-five, class of twenty twenty-four was a ten twenty-one point six. Class of twenty twenty-three was a ten seventy-seven point eight and the class of twenty twenty-two was a ten seventy-six point three. Now, what you see for the percentages next to you guys there too, um is evidence-based reading and writing and then math and it breaks it down to where each school. In those comparables were as well. We did make a big rebound this year, coming from the ten forty-six to the ten sixty-three point two. And what I wanted to highlight is over the last five years, this is my fifth year in the district and I counted today. We've had sixteen new teachers in the last five years out of thirty-nine, that does not include um the counselors. The secretaries, AD, media specialists, health aide, custodial kitchen staff, other building aides. So that's approximately forty percent of our staff in the last five years is new to the building. So I think that we've hired tremendous teachers, than- thankful for your guys and making sure that we had the qualified person. That had experience to replace those tenured teachers that left due to retirement. And when I got hired five years ago, I was told that we had an aging staff, there would be a large turnover in the future. And I think we've gone through the grunt of all of that and we have solidified a staff that is there and it's exceptional for kids. So while our SAT is rebounding and you see that, I think it's important to note the the turnover that you see there. But we're still holding that high academic excellence. Professional development, so when I look at our goals and where we've been with that turnover and it's important to mention that because we've had a large focus. On mentor teaching program, um new teacher orientation, we added the late starts and which is helping us with the vertical and horizontal alignment. Uh we do that six times throughout the year and some of the things that we've also focused on are the des- decimals calculator. Uh and why may that be important, because of the online assessment, the decimals calculator is now an important aspect of that. So the trainings that we're focusing on, um some of our school improvement goals are a cheat sheet, so what we mean by cheat sheet is. We asked each department to come up with three to five goals of what are your top essential standards or power standards to reference to. That you want every kid to know and see, our goal is to have each department or each. In each kid's student schedule, so let's say you have seven classes, they're going to see that three more times in another either sister classes they reference. Or in each subject area, so you're getting that math concept, eh for an example, eighteen more times in your schedule throughout the year. And that's our goal as we've moved through these last couple of years is to can you, to continue to keep that cohesiveness with the new staff. And making sure that our students aren't missing any steps throughout that, what's needed in each core area. Now, um Mr. Markle asked me to focus on the AP scores, but I thought it was important that I would highlight what you would see here with that the SAT. The staff turnover and where we are, as you notice, we have compared to our current um comparisons. We Edwardsburg, according to the state, we are twenty-seven points above the state average on the SAT. Nine fifty-four to ten sixty-three, um in our non-conference. That's our non-conference, so this is our non-conference, so we're up a hundred and nine points there, but in our conference, it's twenty-seven points above. The average that was there, am I saying that right?
So we have the the conference and then this would be comparable Southwest schools.
Now, our comparables are compared to demographics, size and people that look like us, that's why the way I understand is the comparables that you're seeing there. Um Portage Central is usually towards the top and Portage Northern, so when we break that down and I want to move forward from the P- from the SAT. Into the AP and what we've noticed through the our, each year we have to do an annual education report and that's usually due in the month of January. As we peruse through some of the schools that are are ahead of us on the SAT, we wanted to focus on, well, what are they doing different than the high school? To get to where they're at, so. Yeah, please. Yep, so that that brings me to the next slide that you guys have there, um that was blowing up for you. Um on the AP, we have a hundred and forty-nine students enrolled this year. That is in twenty-five, twenty-six and includes two hundred and sixty-four classes, so some students may take one class, but others may take five classes or more. So they try to maximize the AP offerings which offer college credit in that aspect, this is the most Edwardsburg High School has ever offered. A huge celebration this year is we had ninety-one percent of our students last year that took an AP course, get a three or better. Which then acknowledged the high school credit for that, so if you look back to twenty twenty-one, we were at sixty-two percent, seventy-nine. So not only are our kids taking more AP classes than ever before, they're passing at a rate that is comparable to college credit. As well as the dual enrollment opportunity.
I don't understand the ninety percent, I'm not sure what I'm missing here, because I see two hundred and forty-three exams and only a hundred and twenty that got. Three or higher, so I don't. Help me.
So there's a hundred and thirty-two students that took an exam, a hundred and twenty kids got a three or better, but the number of exams was two hundred and forty-three.
Right, so.
Percent of students with a three or plus is ninety percent.
But only half of the tests that are taken score a three or above, correct, I'm understanding this correctly?
The A- the AP students with, they might be taking more than one class.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so there were two hundred and forty-three tests taken.
Yeah, so the but what they're looking at is of the hundred and thirty-two students of all the classes, they took a hundred and twenty. So the number of exams, there's not the total number of exams that are three or higher presented in this graph.
Right, but I'm I'm saying we can see that two hundred and forty-three and a hundred and twenty, that's about half.
Take take out the number of exams right now, we would need to have another number up there to get to get you to the percent you're looking for.
So some kids took multiple exams.
They took, they took calculus test three times?
No, they might have an AP.
So I'm saying if if Johnny took four AP classes.
He's only getting counted for one.
Yeah.
That's the hundred and twenty.
Yeah, just take out the number of exam for for that number of ninety, we could get you the other number of exam, but that's.
Correct, I'm asking of how many of the kids that take that AP cla- of take. An AP class total actually get credit for that actual class.
So that would be dependent on the college and university they're applying to.
I'm sorry, three or above.
Okay.
You're about three or above is that metric?
Yeah, so.
For the total number of tests taken, not not the number of students.
We would have to get you that number to, so right now, yeah, you can't.
I guess I thought that's what the number of exams was.
No, it's the number, it's the AP students who scored a three or higher out of the total num- so out of the hundred and th- thirty-two, a hundred and twenty of them scored. Three or higher on their exams.
But Johnny may have gotten four, all four, it's three or above. Now I understand, okay, I was like, gosh, that's.
I knew we were going to get there. Thank you, I was, that's the part I was missing.
This data is taken directly from the college board, so this isn't data that we created.
Right.
That's offered through the online assessment.
And you can do a pretty big radius around our school preparation and into Indiana and that's the highest number by long shot.
Yeah.
A great tribute to our teachers at the high school.
School district now that you're in Michigan.
So I'm moving into some further numbers, we have twenty percent of the student bodies enrolled at least one AP, that's uh grades ten through twelve. Forty percent of our juniors and seniors are enrolled in an AP course, sixty-seven percent of our juniors and seniors are enrolled in dual enrollment. So going back to what I was explaining earlier, um what we, when we looked at Portage Central as well as St. Joe and some of those other districts. What they have for comparisons is what we noticed is they have less kids doing dual enrollment and more AP offerings. So when we look at Lake Shore, for example, the number of students enrolled in dual enrollment is one percent, they have twenty-one percent of their kids that are taking AP classes. Madawan dual enrolled five percent, but nineteen percent in AP AP classes. Portage Central has two percent dual enrolled, but forty-two percent in AP classes. Portage Northern, two percent dual enrollment, forty-one percent in AP. St. Joe has thirty-seven percent dual enrolled, but twenty-three percent in AP. Vicksburg had eleven percent dual enrolled, but forty percent in AP. Edwardsburg has this year thirty-two percent dual enrolled, but only twelve percent in AP. So when we look at some of those schools that are above us, they have less dual enrollment offer opportunities and more kids taking AP classes. So over the last five years, each year we've added an AP offering, so this year for moving into the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. We're looking at adding possibly three more AP classes and that would be microeconomics, macroeconomics and art in the AP realm. Total right now, we have eleven AP courses at the high school, we're hoping to up that up next year to thirteen or fourteen. Um with that being said, and this comes from my my realm and my heart of of what I do primarily every day. I know that AP is not for everybody, the SAT is not the end all be all, we focus on students who are at risk as well at the high school, we have a ninety-eight percent graduation rate. Attendance is important, we send weekly letters for kids that get the seven and and ten absences, sixty-three percent of our graduates last year had a three point oh or better. We offer success classes similar to what the intermediate and the middle school um had mentioned as well. Uh they that, the way that works at the high school is they have a double block, so if they have math and they're identified as a student that maybe is uh needs a little extra support or interventions. They have two hours of math and that's back to back, same thing in the English realm, they'll have two hours of English in that realm. Uh we also offer school day credit recovery, after school credit recovery, we have. We have the uh, CTE offerings for students that might be, maybe they go to the career center, maybe they do welding at the school. Maybe they have woods or metals or digital design or small business management. We also offer uh, personalized curriculums for students to meet those requirements. And then finally, uh, we have another pathway through the Alternative Learning Center with Mr. Greenwich for anybody else that might seek an alternative way of learning. So that's a little bit to highlight the high school. Um, I, again, starting with the building blocks from the primary up. I see, you can see as it's gone through, we start by separating it with the Dibbles Assessment onwards to those assessments up to the SAT. And I, again, it's a systematic approach and I think it starts from both the bottom up and the top down. And kudos, and I mean, if I had confetti to throw right now, I think that would be uh, kind of how the Mar- Mariners felt against the Tigers or the Brewers against the Cubs, if you will.
Hey, Mike, quick question for you and I apologize, my son's younger, so I'm still kinda learning about this. When it comes to colleges accepting AP versus a dual enrollment credit, are they equivalent? Are they, do they count them, the, is it, are they as likely in one as the other to get credit for that when they go to college?
I can't answer that question because each school is different.
Okay.
So some do and some don't.
Okay.
This is what I'm seeing is the credits, I think, are, get accepted pretty well either way, but the admissions look at AP very hard. I mean, they really look at AP.
And in terms of some school might, like depending if you get a three, four or five on your AP exam. So for example, one university might say, okay, a three gives you credit, will award you credit for that class. Another school might say, well, we're not gonna give you credit, but you don't have to take that basic like one-hundredth level course and you can start at a higher level course. Some do that at a four, some do that at a five. It, but it is very dependent on, on the college or university.
I would figure that would kind of sway a, a student to go one way or another too.
And in terms of dual enrollment, same thing. What dual enrollment classes did you take and how did you score? Just like you would for any transfer credit if you were going from like a community college to.
To regular, yep, okay, got it. Thank you, yeah.
Quite a landscape to navigate, isn't it? Okay, well, to our administrators who we tend to thank you, uh, you know, it's us. You know, and I just to, here we have briefly for you, you know, we seek to contribute and improve and always be right by our students and teachers and help all students to be as successful as possible and, and just have the highest achievement. Um, and you know, so obviously we, we're, we're hard at work. Um, and so some of these things, um, you know, highlights you see in focus areas tonight, we saw that, uh, you know, we're driven by our improvement plans, we're driven by our strategic plans. Um, you know, particularly our, our committee on teaching, learning and programming will begin its work at the end of this month, I think. A lot of that will, will stand forward from this data. Um, there's very much a standards-based focus on mastery. We want students achieving at grade level. And so our teachers uh, and principals are, are paying very close attention to the skills that students have to achieve and, and even multiple skills within a standard. And so when we talk about tier two or success times, opportunities where our teachers are really digging in and they're using our assessment tools, um, you know, to fill in gaps for students, that's ultimately what we must do. Um, you know, we're very focused on our, our curriculum adoptions and then alignment, right? Alignment becomes a big thing. It's the curriculum we're using, ultimately what is assessed uh, on M step or on SAT. Um, is our curriculum well-aligned to our state secrets? These are the things we're always looking at. Um, you know, so this year we have our, our thirty-five M funding that's gonna be used. Uh, we're gonna be doing a K-five literacy adoption. Um, and then as well, uh, you know, some mentioned social studies, which was work that began last year that we continue forward. Uh, in fact, I was meeting with the rep we'll be uh, using for six twelve earlier today. Um, you know, we continue, especially in the early grades, uh, the science of reading, you know, obviously that's something you've probably heard of before. Um, uh, and essentially that comes down to, are we using research-based or research validated practices to teach reading to our students? Are we using curriculum that's research-based and is proven to meet the needs of students as they learn to read? Um, and that is ongoing. I, I think the work that's been done with Gordon Gillingham Professional Development has been outstanding. Uh, the, the number of teachers we have who are so committed, they've taken advantage of the state's offering of letters. That's basically a Catholic course. Um, uh, you know, we have over sixty percent of our, our elementary teachers. And so that's work that we, we continue to do and that professional development as well, when we look at literacy adoption becomes very important. Um, the two-hour late starts are awesome. It's so exciting. It's uh, it's, it's just amazing that we have that structure in place. Um, you know, that's, that's where we're able to look at, vertical articulation of standards. Um, I was able to join both our, uh, our, our middle school social studies team and high school social studies teams on our first two-hour late start and their conversation was just so where you'd want it to be. Where they had standards-based data by student and they're looking through kind of where were our gaps last year. While they had very high achieving scores, it's a commitment to always being better. Um, so that, that skill-based planning, scaffolding, learning, these are all things that we're really committed to. It's the exciting work and it's what we get to continue doing. Um. Well, thank you for the opportunity. What a highlight of our teachers and students. It really is outstanding. Um, so, so thank you for your support and leadership, Dr. Suits for your support and leadership and everyone for your hard work. Uh, it truly is hard work. Our teachers are crushing it, so are our students. Uh, we're happy to answer any questions, yeah.
Do you have any other questions?
Great job.
Thank you, great job.
Thank you.
Totally.
Okay, um. Did you have anything else that you had to add to?
Not today.
Okay.
In a couple of weeks.
Right, okay, uh, if anybody has anything else, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Support.
Uh, any discussion on that? No, not hearing any. Everybody.